Alright, good evening everyone. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time, please. Turn all cell phones, turn devices to off or vibrating this time. Mr. Arthur, you please lead us in our prayer and pledge to seeking service.
Well, thank you for this day, for your many blessings. Thank you for this town and the opportunity to live here and serve here. I pray that you will guide us in all the decisions that we make, that they may be in the best interest of the citizens of Ballenger and within your will. Praise this in Jesus' name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Alright, consider approval of the minutes of September 12th and September 19th, 2016, meetings, please.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from September 12th and September 19th, meetings with corrections as noted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the seat council on any subject at this time. The only ones here. So.
I'm supposed to be on, but I may not be. I'm here representing the park board.
Okay.
With permission from the council, we want to let you know that Terrell and Bowman is stepping down as president while we remain on the board and Joy McDaniel will now be president. We also would like to add Lucy Hutchings to the park board and possibly one or two others later. And do we need to always come and get your blessings for this or do y'all really care?
Is there anything in charge that...
I mean.
Is it because of council point of view?
Okay.
You can't just... Well, this won't change the charge. Yeah, it's me, dude.
I'm just happy. And we did have our seventh annual picnic in the park yesterday. Some of y'all were there. If you weren't there, you missed an opportunity to dump Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
But he did go there once or twice with that. And you probably can't vote on whether or not we can do this. Which changes right for this.
It's not until June. We'll take care of it on the 17th.
Works for me. Do I need to come back or no?
Not unless you have the other two people you want to add.
That gives me two weeks.
You have a lot, not yet have you.
Okay.
Welcome to Ballenger. Did you come to the meeting or are you out for it?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. You have getting in trouble with passes or something. Show up and you volunteer. Yes, sir, Mr. Arthur.
I would just like to suggest a future agenda item. It's something that I've seen here around town, especially this summer. I know it's always an issue, but it seems to become a morbid issue. Stray and feral cats breeding uncontrollably. I know of at least thirty on my block alone from three separate litters. On the other side of town, near the old Dairy Queen, also whatnot, I have a rent house in that neighborhood as well. I have personally caught three cats and have them spayed and neutered in order to try to keep population under control. I've worked with Humane Society on two separate litters and getting them adopted. So I'd just like to propose something to look at this as an issue, see if there are some other outside organizations. I know we do have some local organizations that are trying, you know, as much as they can with their limited resources. But just to look to see if there's anybody else that we can reach out to to try to get this issue under control so that, you know, we're not having a spike in euthanasia and all of that as well.
Okay. Can I make this one? One, just probably not going to necessarily discuss that per se. One of the things when we go to our convention tomorrow, I've got a laundry list of things. That animal control, generally speaking, will be one of the issues that I want to try to get some more information on. And so I can hopefully gather some information and maybe have something for you when we get back.
And I do have an additional resource that I wanted to mention. I am more than willing to help in any way that I can in answering questions. I actually worked with an organization in the Dallas area called Kitty and Co. Cat Rescue. I was actually helped them cut their costs and opened a clinic that did spay and neuter and similar things like that. But also Dallas Cat Lady is a big organization in the Dallas area that I'm sure will be more than willing to either help an organization get going here doing the same type of thing or give information. She's really good about that type of thing. Like I still do donations with them for auctions that they do and things like that. So just some additional information.
Sure. Dallas Cat Lady. Don't forget that.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, discuss and take action to renew the curfew ordinance. You should have that in your packet. Chief, any suggestions for any changes?
No, but it is a valuable resource. They find these kids running around late at night. It's a probable cause.
Okay.
How long do we renew for?
Two years.
Four years. We need to have it pretty used. So I'll make a motion that we release the curfew ordinance on a additional three years. Aye?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you.
I think we made some of the highlights.
The clowns.
Oh, yeah, supposedly.
Clowns are coming. Come on out. We're not part of the school, we're the teachers.
Moving along.
Just kidding, it's a joke. I'm kidding, it's a joke. I'm Jeff Hutz, you're...
Alright. Discuss and take action to approve the 2017 holiday schedule. You should have a list of holidays in your packet as well.
These are the exact holidays for 2016 that you have heard. This is the beginning of the fiscal year. You'll see a few more of these housekeeping items as they pop up. But same as you did those last year. And they coincide with the banking holidays.
Well, and I'll forget, so next Monday you will be closed here.
Yes, that's what I was saying. This will take effect in 2017. Calendar of 2017.
I make a motion we approve the 2017 holiday schedule.
Second?
I'm second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, remove from the table, discuss and take action on amendments to the peddler, itinerant merchants ordinance.
See the motion removed from peddler?
Please.
Make a motion to remove that from the table.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion. Yes, please.
Okay. This was kind of brought up at last meeting. Y'all asked me to crack an ordinance that would make it more restrictive for internet peddlers, which is internet merchants, I should say, basically the door-to-door guy. That's just the best way to put it. I mean, there's a more legal definition. I'm sure Ed could dispel this on, but the door-to-door guy is what we're targeting here. The fee was fifty dollars for... I have the code book right here. The fee was five dollars per day, ten dollars per week, thirty dollars per month, fifty dollars for three months, seventy-five dollars for six months, and a hundred dollars for twelve months. In researching what other cities of like size have done, they have made these far more restrictive in... I don't want to say punitive, but they made the fee a lot higher than what we are currently assessing. So one of the things that I took out of this, and this is not as high as other towns or other communities, but I think it's a fair one for Ballenger. It's fifty dollars per day.
Per person.
Per person. And that's for a twenty-four hour period. So if DirecTV comes in and there's three guys, it's fifty dollars per guy. And that permit is good for twenty-four hours. If they want to come in and do it on Monday and they want to do it on Tuesday, it's another fifty dollars for another twenty-four hours.
Do we need to define that itinerant merchants? Or is that defined...
We have a definition of that.
I just want to make sure that we don't get it confused with the people that get permission to stay downtown.
Right. Internet merchant. As used in this chapter, internet merchants shall mean any person, his agent, employee, servant, or representative who engages in the city in any business which is transacted or conducted in the city on, in, upon, or through, or from any premises or space, any non-governmental property within the city for which no arrangement has been made, which provides a legal right of occupancy for the purpose of conducting such a business for a period of six months.
You said it, itinerant, not internet.
Yeah, I said it. I did not say it. I said it. I tried to be as... One thing, this doesn't preclude the swan's man.
Right.
I mean, the swan's man can come by your house if you're on his route or whatever.
He's not going door-to-door, he's going to...
He's going to establish customers, yes. This doesn't preclude... There's some other, like insurance people have a massive exemption on this. Don't ask it one, but the law doesn't even apply. But this would curtail, hopefully, the people who are just driving through Ballenger and pay a hundred to support this town today. The other thing the ordinance would provide is that no permit shall be issued within a twenty-four hour period of submittal to the chief of police. So in other words, you can come in, pay your fifty bucks, and then start selling. You would have to come in and pay your fifty, or come in, put an application in, and then wait twenty-four hours, pay your permit fee, and then you can go door-to-door sell.
Okay. What about get Hellstorm? And these contractors coming from out of town and go door-to-door sell, so they need to get a permit to do that?
That would, that would fall under this ordinance, yes.
I just want to make sure. Because they swarm and we get a hellstorm.
Oh, yes. Yeah. That's all they do is follow those. Now, if it's referred to by your...
That's different.
Yeah.
It's a referral when they show up for a permit, that's different.
Yeah, like a barb or whomever, Farm Bureau, whatever, they come out and say, hey, Phil Barb, can we come look at your roof to apply?
Looks like never going to happen. Have to do this kitchen on that.
But yes, this would be at the roofers as well.
Okay. So I just want to make sure.
It also states that a permit has to be issued within seventy-two hours. So it's not like we can just have it dangling out there. It also gives a provision for an extension that's sole discretion of the chief of police for extraordinary circumstances. For example, college group comes in and it's a group of magazine people and there's thirty guys and we don't have time to run everybody's driver's license and so on and so forth and it takes them four or five days to get that ready. That would be one of those situations.
I doubt there'll be some magazines that are expected.
That, well, I think if you're... And I'm trying to phrase this as politely as possible. If you're a reputable door-to-door service, the fifty dollars won't hinder you. I think what we're trying to do, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, and Stan, these guys sometimes use the door-to-doors away to case a house. Get into the house, see what's there. That kind of sort of thing, correct?
They're got harassment complaints. The guy don't want to talk to them, they'll try to get in their face. A lot of that sort of thing.
Yeah.
The people are not... They're not rude enough or whatever you want to say. You just slam the door.
Yeah.
They take it, you know?
Yeah.
When you might just slam the door, they seem to want... They take advantage of that.
Yeah. Anyway, that is the amendments to chapter eighteen of the code.
Make a motion that we pass the peddler before we do that.
You know, we already have, you know, ordinance about roofing contractors.
That we separate?
Yeah. It's already in there. Where? Oh, I haven't found it, but I did read it a while ago. It's been in there for a long time. I mean, it wouldn't, I'm guessing it doesn't hurt to include it in this, but we're supposed to have a list of all roofing contractors and government contractors in the new business that's in the city.
Do they do it then?
We haven't done it. They did it one time in one of the big stalls that hang in the one that put it in there.
So you're talking as far as locals being on that list to protect them?
Any.
Okay.
Yeah, any contractor that's in there.
If you're a... If you're a local roof, you're probably not going door-to-door.
Oh, no, I mean, those roofing contractors do go door-to-door.
No.
We had Hellstorm. You're a local person, you don't...
No, because your customers are calling you.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And see that?
They're calling all the local guys during Hellstorm, after Hellstorm.
You can call them and they'll tell you to see you in three months.
Now, we have to take a look at that ordinance because if you said any contractor, does that mean that every contractor in the city is registered with the city?
Yes, hopefully, yeah. This is one of the things that I would want to go over with y'all that we can do later.
Well, there's many things that need to be done over in the code.
Because being a registered contractor is one thing. Being door-to-door, going door-to-door is something different.
Right.
To me, in my mind, I mean, registering as a contractor does protect the city. But that doesn't mean just because you're registered as a contractor can you go door-to-door.
I'm sure, so you probably get this in.
Yeah.
No, you're probably not.
I don't think they're exempt from that.
No, well, under the definition of internet sales, internet sales.
Itinerant.
Itinerant. Itinerant. It's been a long day. And when we go to executive, you'll know why. It's just a long day. Any person, agent, employee, servant, or representative who engages in the city in any business which is transacted or conducted in the city on, in, upon, through, or from any premise or space upon any non-governmental property within the city for which no arrangement has been made.
That's it, that covers the door-to-door guy.
Of course, it covers the door-to-door guy.
Alright, I make a motion that we pass the Peddler, Itinerant Merchants Ordinance as presented.
Second?
I'm second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, consider approval of billing permits.
Okay, I have. We have. The Baller Daniel, one thirteen North South, has put in a carport behind his building that's a twenty-by-twenty-one by about five foot structure. According to Harrison, the one-on-one sergeant, metal stored building. I guess in putting in a metal stored building with a equivalent of twenty-four by twenty-four carport.
Yeah. And they were going to remodel the building. I think they were just going to turn it to a room. Yeah.
And Stripes. Eighteen oh one Hutchings is going to clear their new kennedy sign. And I have teams that came out of late. Two thousand and eighteen Broadway wants to build a twenty-by-twenty-four by eight foot carport.
You didn't, you don't have that. You don't have that.
No, you don't. This is like...
It's not that.
Was it Phil King?
Phil King, yeah.
What's he moving to?
No, what? At two thousand and eighteen, twenty eighteen, he's going to build a carport. That was his grand house.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-four by eight foot. And one of her package.
Her package.
Her package. For him, a car to drive. Wants to put a carport in front of her house.
In front or on the side?
In front.
Can we have them on the front?
There's two of her neighbors that are existing, that's already there.
What is that picture, the struggles over there?
That's something like that, Wes.
Yeah, there's other one on that street I know.
Right. Is that that second blue over by me?
Yes.
It's the blue. Yeah, I know. There's at least two or three of them. There was usually two or three. And one across the street. And we already did the one on that other corner where the gentleman's built one. Alright, this is...
Us three arms.
Right.
What is Stripes doing as far as the kennedy?
They're changing the sign.
The kennedy sign. Probably going to say something too or something like that.
And a vest?
I think. What is that up there? A vest or something? A vest?
And Bob?
Bob's carport that's in the alley?
Yes.
That's legal.
Yes. Well, it's already there, yeah, it's legal.
Besides the point it's not already there because we already discussed that last few times. Now, if somebody places it, they can remove it and they'll be fine for it.
But, you know, other than that, that's legal.
There's no setback issue?
Right.
It's in the...
It's in the...
Yeah, but it's already five feet away from the building anyway, correct?
We probably do need to do something. We'll bring that up in future...
Okay.
I make a motion we approve the building plans as presented.
Second?
I'm second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, here the police activity report. I'll tee Mark the deputy.
Matt, your name?
I'm Mr. Arthur.
September was kind of slow. We got almost the same amount of calls, but we had a lot of people have vacations and stuff, sick days. So the numbers are down. Total calls, three hundred and forty-three. Couple, one of them we've already discussed. I think everybody knows about the county commissioner's accident and all that. That's all been given to the Rangers. The Rangers are finished, they reconstructed it with a DPS accident reconstructionist. That's all been done. It's, they got it to the DA now, I think? I'm not quite sure. They're done with it, they said they were finished. So it's probably at the DA by now, which he will make the decision what he wants to do. But it's out of our, our deal. We're done with it. We gave everything we had to the Rangers. No MIP, no MIC, just not, no curfews.
Yeah.
Everything, like I said, numbered it down because all the vacations and everything. Sergeant Maris being commended. We had a man slice his wrist, hit an artery, throwing blood everywhere over on Sixth, Fifth Street?
Fifth.
We're over on Fifth Street. He made a mess. Anyway, Sergeant Maris grabbed the hold of him, got blood all over himself to stop the bleeding on this guy before the... And there was blood all over the living room, all over the bedroom, all over the sidewalk. He's being commended on that, but he can, but he'll probably get a commendation for that later. Anyway, I can't think of anything else. I was on vacation last week. I don't think we had anything major last week. We're like topless and...
And you came back, and you came back.
My... Any questions for me?
Some of the issues are down because schools starting back up, is that...
Yeah, sometimes, especially with the kids we have. So usually if we catch them now, it'll be Friday night or seven. Most likely Friday after football. But nothing else. Thank you.
You're very welcome. So did you get in the hospital and you made it?
Yeah, he okay. Thank you, it's all good. They have to sort it out.
Did you say you thank you? Yeah, he apologized, he apologized. He was a little angry that we were there.
We got him.
Yeah. So we got help and then measure more and on meds and everything else.
Good. Thank you, sir. The park, you don't have to deal with help.
Alright, here the city administrators, my weekly report, please.
Do they have the financials in their practice, though? Okay. I'll get to these financials for the next meeting. We just ran them Friday since seven, you know? Today is actually the first business day. I'll tell you, if you just look at total funds, we have a surplus of about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That includes a surplus of sixty-six thousand, three twenty-nine in the general fund. That includes a surplus. And when I say surplus, this is revenues over expenditures. Revenues over expenditures, thirty-one thousand, nine fifty-five on the water sewer and about thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand in the airport. So that goes up to a total of about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That may sound like a lot, but keep in mind this is a five million dollar budget. So it's, it's pretty good. There was a couple departments that went over budget. There's a couple departments that obviously didn't meet budget. And so let's hope things just shake out. Bottom line, bottom line is we finished up about one twenty-seven. And like I said, I'll have these for you guys at the next meeting. You know, we'll ask questions. On October twenty-fifth, we have a meeting with... We'll get to that later. Yeah, we'll do that at the last. Water meter update. We have replaced roughly ninety percent of the water meters in town. There are a few more. I did get a couple of complaints from some individuals in town. They around, be in the gallery.
Well, there were four of them sitting in the gators smoking cigarettes while two of them were working on the ground.
We, uh...
They were just sick.
Twice, I didn't went down and that's the same thing that happened. And when they left my street today, it was not drive-off sensibly. It was pedal to the metal, both trucks.
But they paid by the hour meter?
They are paid, they're paid by HD or whatever their contract.
But what is our contract for a meter?
We pay by the meter, yeah.
They can have eight guys on a gear. They don't cost us anything.
Yeah.
It's just the idea.
As long as they're going to stay in for city employees, I think we're set.
I don't think they can, but...
The long story short, I've addressed a number of issues with them. The longer this thing's gone on, I think the more careless they have been. I received a phone call from the gentleman in the gallery Tuesday, Wednesday? Wednesday morning, I believe, yeah. Wednesday afternoon, I lit into our contract trip with HD.[1681.72] Um, that went uphill and downhill. I'm halfway pleased with some of the work they're doing. I think the meters, I think it's going to be fine. I've encouraged them to take more time and be careful with what they do. Um, they came back and said, well, we did a hundred meters and five of them aren't right. And I said, well, I'll, I'll pay you five times. And let's just see how, how that works. Um, so I think we've worked through some issues as far as installs. Um, there, the meters are fine. The meters are good. The install is getting sloppy. That's just that's the, that's what it is. We got the collector up last week, and there was some sort of communication today. Corey is.
They would be assumed some kind of, I'll have to, you know, share with.
Yeah. Corey is running point on the collection side, the, the technology side of this, of this, uh, project. Um, and so that's just now getting underway. Um, we were experiencing some issues at Trace and Bigos', um, community store over here, uh, with trucks and semis making U-turns in the middle of the street. Um, our staff asked the driver politely to not make U-turns in the street. Kind of confused. Come around back behind the building. You saw that, don't, don't beat the street up. Um, he, uh, basically said he'll do whatever he wants. And so, uh, we were in the process of putting up a high fencing along, what's that, Sixth Street? Fifth Street?
Uh, yeah.
Trace and Bigos'. So, we're out there along, we were going to put high fencing up to, uh, prevent them from making a U-turn. Um, we notified Trace and Bigos' that we were going to do that. And within twenty-four hours, the owner called me and said, we will take care of the problem. And so, he has now told me no truck parking over there, uh, tow it away. Do whatever everyone, everyone still believes this. And so, we've agreed to let them do that. But it is, um, one in particular, you can see where it has damaged Fifth Street, uh, to where we're going to come back and repair it next year. We spent roughly about five thousand dollars on Fifth Street. Uh, it was one of the worst streets in town. And if that had kept up, it was moving to be the same. Um, we have started, uh, this is not necessarily city related, but it might be some, a point of interest for people. Um, a group of parents have started a boundary youth football league here. We had a hundred and fifty kids sign up. On Saturday morning, there was roughly three hundred to three hundred and fifty people in town, uh, for a football game, for several football games. Um, and that will continue through the month of October. And, uh, I've reached out to, yes.
Where do they play?
The junior high practice field. Um, I reached out to the businesses. Uh, the, the league never asked for a donation from anyone. This is self-funded. Uh, but I did reach out to businesses and, and encourage them to, if they want to come out with coupons or let them know, uh, that people are in town and they're probably going to be hungry. Um, just doing what we can to make one of the slower days more productive, uh, for people.
So, what age group is this?
Uh, there's two divisions. Uh, the minor league division is first through third. And the major league division is fourth through sixth. We have eleven teams. Um, eight from Ballinger. No, excuse me, seven from Ballinger, three from Robert Lee, and one from Winters. Um, I've already been asked, uh, the total salary here, me and Ken Maillard, once we started this. Uh, I've been asked if we were going to do this again next year, and I said, I don't see any reason why not. I've been asked if we're going to do basketball this year. And I said, I don't see any reason why not. Um, we did run the monies through the park board. Um, we cannot set up a bank account. So, we did deposit all the money, and we made an agreement with the park board that whatever was left over, they get to keep. So, the park board will make a little bit of money off of this. Um, and so, they'll continue through, uh, November the fifth. Uh, we had a city council member whose daughter was the league flag puller on a particular team. Uh, she made third grade voice from Robert Lee. Blush a little bit. The girl would pull their flag.
But she did ask a lot of the other girls coming on.
Um, scheduled for October is Starland Convention. We're going to be closed for Columbus Day on the tenth. Uh, on the twenty-fifth is the TMCN convention. And obviously, uh, tomorrow through Friday, uh, we will be at the TML uh, convention. The TMCN convention is a one-day affair in Adelaide. Twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. That, whatever that Wednesday is.
Twenty-sixth.
Okay, I'm sorry. Twenty-sixth. Thank you. Um, and finally, the Texas Department of Transportation. We have a meeting, uh, the mayor doesn't know about this. He's about to find out. Uh, we have a meeting on October twenty-fifth with TechSod to discuss, um, uh, arms at the railroad crossing.
Ooh, yeah.
At Broadway and Eighth. Would y'all like to get arms on Eleventh Street as well?
No, not crossing that Eleventh Street.
Excuse me?
Ten.
Tenth, sorry, tenth.
Um, tenth and thirteenth?
Tenth and thirteenth.
Thirteenth mainly.
Thirteenth was dangerous.
I'd say thirteenth has more traffic.
Thirteenth is your, your highly, thirteenth, eighth, and Broadway are your high traffic areas.
Okay.
And we have lights everywhere. Be great on the other ones.
If we at least had the lights, not the arms?
Yeah.
Do they start attacking trailers down there on thirteenth?
Yeah. I mean, one, once you got week season going on, and they have all those cars down there, you can't see nothing.
No, you can't.
And I mean, they're supposed to be parked two hundred feet away from the intersection, but they don't do that.
And then there's what, like five to seven tracks right there where they're at least, uh.
You don't know which one to come off.
You sneak across real slow.
Yeah.
I don't know something.
But Broadway, Eighth, and thirteenth are your high traffic areas.
Well, that's, that's going to be the gist of the meeting. Uh, there may be a few other ancillary issues that pop up, but we're going to, uh, the main focus will be, and this was initiated by the railroad. Um, I think they wanted to put them up. They're liable for those things, is my understanding. So, they were, they were trying to put those up. They were wondering what the city's thought was. Um, without having sort of discussion with council, I said, we're definitely open to that.
If they put those up, can their speed increase?
I don't believe so.
With speed regular, because they go through Coleman. I mean, fast.
Yeah. Coleman and Abing both, they go through pretty quick, but we haven't.
They're not fine. I just wonder if for them, it's better for them, you know?
My understanding is whatever, if it's in the resident, if, if they're going along sixty-seven, they can go as fast as the speed limit is at sixty, you know, on overall of sixty-seven. If they're coming through a residential area, there's no, I think they have to go down to like twenty-five or thirty or something like that.
When they come to the backside of Coleman there?
Yeah, they're moving. They're moving. Um, one of the other things on the water meters, and I wanted to show this to everybody. The water meter comes in here, and, and I want everybody on the camera to see this. The water meter comes in here. Everything from the city, from Ivy to the plants, to the distribution system, everything comes in to this point right here. And we are responsible for it. Everything from this point back to the house is the responsibility of the owner. And I bring this to you because this is representative of what we're seeing in people's yards as we're replacing the water meters. And then we break some of these things off, we are making some modest repairs to, to get it going. But this is what we're seeing here. And this is what water's flowing through.
And they can pump it up with water.
And this is, you know, again, this is, I can control everything up to this point. From this point to the sink is the property owner's responsibility. And this is indicative of what we're finding in town as we're replacing the meters. And so, I, I just want everybody to understand, we can only control so much to a certain point. After that, it becomes the property owner's issue. Um, if y'all want to pass this around right there. It's really, because it.
They took out my street.
It's, it, water's supposed to flow through that, which means you should be able to look through it and see it. And you kind of have to wiggle it to around us to see.
It proves very.
The water. Anyway, um, I want y'all to see that. I wanted the folks on YouTube to see that this is what, this is what's in your yard. So, that is my report, sir. Any other questions? No. All right, here are requests for future agenda items from the city council.
Couple of other things. One, um, do we have a policy for fines for people that start projects before getting permits? We, I mean, we just had a rash of these lately.
You talking about?
Is there one in place today?
We don't.
That's something we.
Yeah, we've been talking.
Well, that's just probably a deny we talking. It's just, there's just been a plethora of them. There's just been a whole bunch of people that actually done it, and then, then they come in popper a minute later. And probably, and I don't want to, I'm not talking about a big dollar or not. I don't want to be punitive in this deal, but it's up, I'll show a little bit extra if you're going to.
Roll the dice.
If you're going to roll the dice. You know, I, I don't want to be punitive. You know, I'm not talking about a thousand dollars, but it'll be something that at least you feel incentivized to go get a permit before you do something.
I'd say at least five hundred.
But I'll do something.
If you, if you're, if you're talking a house that's two, three hundred thousand dollars, they're going to laugh at you for the hundred or two hundred dollars. You're going to pay it.
Yeah, but it's a carport, you know?
Yeah.
Well, there's a carport that run up on Lemon Street that never got a permit.
Well, we're solutioning this thing. We can't solution it on our own. It's just, it's something we need to discuss.
Yeah.
You know?
Did you have another one?
Yeah, one more. Um, uh, the fields up there behind the high school. I'd like to find out who owns them. Where the soccer fields?
Yeah, soccer fields?
Mm-hmm. That was an open issue. It was a long time ago. It was not a sore point. It was the body park fields. And there was something legal about it. I'd just like to know who, if the city owns them, if the city doesn't own them, the school owns them. Just trying to figure out who owns those.
It's, I've looked into that, and it's some family members that didn't have anything left, left it to the housekeeper. Housekeeper donated it, and it's a big pile of stuff.
Donated it to?
Well, Bonnie, Bonnie got the house and that, and that deal right.
Yeah.
And so, then Bonnie, I thought she deeded it, or she gave it to some organization as long as they used it for some certain thing.
I mean.
If they didn't, it reverted back to them.
That's, I mean, a lot of it was donated to the, what was it? It was donated to like a Ronald County Sports Association, which does not exist anymore.
Right.
But, you know, the Ballinger Youth Football Association uses it now.
Uh-huh.
And so.
But the W was all soccer fields.
No, which, I mean, we, we could, I mean, I mean, we could go practice field, another field, you know, whatever we need to do. Because I'm part of the youth association right now. And it's, the school's looking into it. I know they've heard attorneys looking to the deeds and who actually owns it compared to us, you know, because it was all the big maintenance thing.
See, I, what I remember is that was part of the problem with the soccer stuff is the school owned it.
Yeah.
But, but I remember there was some issue about who actually owned it. I thought it reverted back to the city or something if it wasn't used. I, I don't remember all that language.
Yeah, I mean, what I can get out of it is just a bit of a problem. And I mean, a couple of orders to get down, barge it out in a couple of days, but there's kind of a time.
I like the Christmas Michael building right down here. Nobody.
Yeah.
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 We don't want, it's okay. We just walked away. But it's wrecked or dash Christmas Michael.
Still.
Do they know that, that there, the soccer field, so they can practice up there?
No, no, it's not taken care of at all.
It's.
Remember how nice it used to be to own?
There was a breaker system out there, and when some position closed down, the school tried to keep up with it, but when they got cut back on their maintenance crews, they quit taking care of it.
But, but if we start taking care of it, you can use it for baseball, or you can use it for football, or soccer, or whatever.
Yeah.
It's just an underutilized asset for the six foot.
I think about a furniture or something.
Yes. Well, you got there with the maintainer, blame that thing off pretty quick.
Well, you have to watch out. I mean, there's, there's a pretty big one's feature you left. You have to wash out the water line.
Are you doubting Scotty liked it?
I'm not doubting myself.
But it just, it was just a thought. I mean, it's just a, it's, it's an asset that's just going.
I know, I know the school was looking into it, so we may have to ask the school board what they found on.
No sense. I spend resources if they've already done it.
Yeah, why are you asking?
Yeah, I want to.
Because there was some issue between
Yeah.
the, the
Youth Association.
Youth Association, the city, and the, and the school. And I just don't remember.
I never think we were involved in it.
I thought we were way back then.
I know the youth association, we have money that we want to upgrade Davenport Field and do some other stuff, but can we technically do that? You know, that, that's our problem.
Right.
And so, because if we're going to spend our money
Right.
to upgrade the field, and the school says, no, it's ours.
Yeah.
Now, now that looks pretty easier than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our, that's our problem there.
Because that's all part of the Davenport Field up there and all the other concessions staying and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So, we're going to give it.
I've got an issue if no one else, uh, I want to bring it up. Um, do we have, I'm sorry, Steve, do you have something? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I must apologize there, one. Uh, I was going there all last week. Uh, like I asked y'all to read chapter sixteen. We're going to have a discussion about it. It's not, so we can do that later. Next meeting, we even have a pretty lengthy discussion, uh, about a lot of code, uh, stuff that's in their book, thing that we need to add. And, uh, so that's, you know, that, that's where I would add that, uh, code classes.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, there are a lot of things going on that we need to, to address.
Did you get handouts from it or anything so that we?
They didn't have, they didn't have.
They didn't have.
It'll do it anymore, Billy. They said it on the internet.
Do, was it on the internet?
No.
What?
No.
Was it the tees? Yes.
One book, and I got it. But anyhow, just for our next meeting, we, we need to have a pretty lengthy.
Talking about additions, modifications, and edits to what we already currently have?
Yeah, I'm telling you, we've already gotten things.
Okay. Anyone else? I've got something. Um, our personnel policy manual, uh, we have what's called a use it or lose it policy. In other words, you can only roll over so many vacation hours, uh, where you lose them. What's the number of?
You know, like every hour, eighty hours.
Eighty hours. We have a number in the police. We can see that every year. Um, what that has done is the entire month of September, we have basically been running what's called a skeleton crew. Because we have employees who rightfully so are taking their vacation in the month of September. One of the things I would like for us to discuss at a future agenda is to move those vacation hours to December thirty-first. The thought being, um, and traditionally, it's been this way since I've been here. It's probably been here longer than that. People take off in September because that's when the deadline is. The thought being is that if they take off between, I'd rather them take off December the fifth than September the fifth. Um, September, we're finishing up street paving. Uh, we got a number of other projects in the works. And, uh, it comes to a halt when you have half your staff taking vacation, which is rightfully theirs, but they're going to lose. And so.
You're kind of doing the end work for me.
Yes. Yes, yes, this is every one of us.
Same thing happened to us this past month. Police department. We had a whole bunch of people that had to take time off.
Yeah. And so, that will be something, um, I'll bring to y'all. And I'll, I'll prepare something for you. We'll put the policy manual on someone's. Uh, wanted to keep you guys aware that, you know, we, there's nothing worse than doing, hey, we, we could have already been done. Oh, by the way, the street paving. We're doing, uh, Sergeant Sharp, Pew, and U-Banks from Eighth to Broadway. And we have two of the three done. Um, we might have three of the three done. They were putting Blacktop down this afternoon on one of, on, on Pew. Um, they're going to put a ton on U-Banks. That is one of the worst streets, but they're going to bring, get that done. The thought, the thing is, though, if we had an entire street crew, we would have been done. And so, uh, you know, when you only have two guys show up, it's hard to, it's hard to get a lot done. But they did other stuff like that. They were busy. We didn't get what we needed. That's what we got. That is. All right. Moving along. Ballinger City Council should be in effect. This person was authorized by Texas government code section five five four nine two seven. Consultation to the attorney for public opportunity one, resources.